Okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes nicely submitted by council?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mayor, anything other than the agenda items?
Nothing else to add. Oh, I did have a question. We emailed the agendas out and all the budgets out. And I didn't know if any of the counselors, you know, the special finance subcommittee, if you'd like a hard copy versus just electronic copy.
I think I would like a hard copy.
No problem.
I'm gonna try it with my laptop.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let you know.
I'll see how I'm sticking up for myself.
You're gonna need a laptop. It's a huge document.
You're like, I need a laptop.
Good for you.
So, as of now, just one.
I'm gonna try a little.
Okay.
Oh, sure. Make me look bad.
No, not bad, ancient.
So, I'll do one.
Oh, ouch!
I'll do one and I'll also ask Wednesday at the council meeting if anybody else wants one. So, I'll put, I'll do one.
Since you have to leave, I wanna confirm with the counselors. You sent me an email. That's this guy here. Gosh. May 17th at 5:00 is School Human Services Debt and Interest. We will have superintendent here for that one.
Yes, and the Director of Business Services.
And May 24th is Public Works, Enterprise, Culture Recreation. We will have those people here. And the May 25th is Public Safety, Fire and Police are here.
They're all very happy to attend.
So, these are the, Joe, I'm gonna announce these at the meeting, but I just wanna confirm them today with the counselors. You're all set with those dates? This is for reviewing the budget. Okay? Let's get into the Veterans Assistance Request. Much straightforward. I have one question. He says 75% of the expenditure is reimbursed by the state.
That's true.
75% of this $65,000 is reimbursed?
75% of all funds that he extends.
So.
Yep.
That's pretty good. So, the state gives us 75% of this money, though. That's good.
I have a question. Maybe you can answer it. I have actually four.
Sure.
Um, I, since I'm kinda new, what, what's the purpose behind South Hadley, Granby, and East Hampton? Do they work together as a three-town unit?
We actually have, it's very unique. We actually have a Veterans District, which is made up of East Hampton, um, East Hampton, South Hadley, and Granby. And, um, and out of that, we share a Veterans Agent. We are his employer. And John is our Veteran, John O'Connor, if you don't know him, he's our Veterans Agent. And we have him here in the afternoons from one to, you know, one to close. He's in South Hadley in the mornings, and then on Friday, he's all day in Granby.
Okay.
And so, he services the three communities. And, um, he, the, um, the district is represented by me, Free Hampton, by a member of the Board of Selectmen for, uh, South Hadley and Granby.
Okay.
And we meet quarterly.
Um, okay.
And he provides us with quarterly caseloads. And, uh, right now, uh, East Hampton's share of the Veterans Service, of our Veterans Services Agent, is, uh, is a little higher than South Hadley's because it's based on the equal value.
Equalized value.
You know, the equalized value. What's the little, three little letters for that?
EQV.
EQV. And, um, it, actually, at one time, South Hadley's was higher. Now, ours is a little higher, but they're very close.
So, our, our budget funding for this is $275,000? Or is that all in? Or?
I would, you would have to look at, we would have to look at what has been spent so far. I can tell you, you know, I can pull out our budget book and tell you what was budgeted. But obviously, the 65 is above that, as you know, because it's in front of you. And, um, and he technically does...
And I should've caught John with these questions, actually.
No, that's perfectly fine. That's perfectly fine. And, um, and John is, um, he's, he's, uh, he's extremely, he's very good with the veterans, and he's really good at what he does. And, but the need has increased, as you could well imagine. And it's not always the caseload, it's not always the amount of people, but, um, it, you know, it could be the individual needs.
Right.
So, it could be medical, dental, unfortunately, burial, um, all different, uh, living, housing.
And his...
Sorry.
Go ahead.
I should say, does medical health go, come into that?
Yes, like if they...
I meant, uh, mental health services.
Well, what John does also, which is, you know, very interesting, is when they come in for services, he directly aligns them up with the VA so that they, so whatever services they're not getting from the VA, they can get. Or, or if by any chance they need to apply for disability, he assists them in that and provides them with any other type of state funding information that's available.
So, is this...
And it does go by your income. It's a, um, he has a state computer in his office that, you know, he files on, and everything is based exactly on your income. So, some, you know, get different benefits based on what you have or what you don't have.
So, is the budget for this group then kind of a gap filler between the VA and whatever they might be able to afford themselves?
What, the, our budget is based on John's services here.
East Hampton only.
East Hampton only.
But it's Hampton only.
But the services... And we are charged, uh, we, you know, there is a, a cut and dried amount that, you know, that we are charged and budgeted. And then, once John goes over the services, that's where these come in.
Okay, so...
You know, John, you'll see John's, we estimate what his, what he will be giving out, but there's also, there's also an employee line for John, personal services line for John.
Sure, yeah. So, I apologize for these questions.
That's all right. And John is treated, uh, he, he's not, you know, one of our employees here in East Hampton. He's, you know, an employee of the, of the council. And, um, he, you know, we pay it to his benefits, into his health insurance. So, he is an employee, but he's an employee of the district.
So, when, when he's providing a service, he's essentially matching up veterans by need with either the VA, if they haven't stopped their first, or with a specific service?
When they come to him, they come to him to get a service. And he provides that service. He will, you know, check into get, you know, he needs to get their, um, their, uh, uh, what do you call that for, method DD1? He needs to get their Veterans Form, to, you know, prove that they're a veteran. And then, whatever service they're requiring, whatever they need. It might be they just need some, you know, like, uh, help with their, with their, with their apartment, or help with medical benefits, help with, you know, like I said...
Wouldn't the VA be the first stop?
Not always. Some of them might be getting some Veterans Benefits, and if they are, then what they're eligible through us is less.
Okay.
But, so he is, he is like, he is also, he serves here to provide the benefits that they come in and request.
Okay.
Based on their financial needs. And, but he also serves as a liaison. So, John's purpose is, if they are not already set up somewhere else, is to lead them down that path.
Yeah.
And he is extremely good at that.
Oh, perfect, okay.
You know, so in other words, to, if, if they have other alternatives, to get them off their monthly, uh, payments through the cities.
And, and maybe you have it there, and we can connect after, but, uh, do you know how many vets or how many cases or...
Fifty-three. Or, um, let me make sure I'm looking at East Hampton. Fifty-three for East Hampton in March. Um, okay. So, I'll kinda split it up here. So, you have fifty-three in East Hampton for March. Let's see if I can write it down here for February. But he, you're welcome to, to view this. This has, you know, the amounts of money given out, um, in March, and then it has February. Um, let's see where the amount of people are on here for February and January, but the amounts are on here. And also, what's, uh, what's also attached here is South Hadley. South Hadley, and again, uh, this just proves what I was saying earlier. South Hadley has, uh, like, in, for instance, the month of March, we had 53 cases in East Hampton, and South Hadley had 46, but their dollar amount was higher than ours. So, it just depends on what they're coming in for. You know, where they fall. And again, um, you're more than welcome to look at this. Uh, ordinary benefits, fuel, you know, doctor's visits, medications, hospitalizations, dental, miscellaneous.
Okay.
Okay?
I would, actually.
Would you like to do this? Feel free.
All right, thanks.
And that's, um, I just received that at the quarterly meeting last Thursday.
Okay.
So, it's fresh.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Just to be clear, when John asks for this money, he needs the money for each East Hampton veterans?
That's correct. Falling.
The budget that we supply him, besides paying his salary, part of his salary and benefits, is to provide services for East Hampton.
That's it.
So, when, is it a reimbursement thing, or like, he, he comes in and says, "I've gotta do this for this veteran," and how, how is the funding mechanism so that he gets the money? I mean, is it a reimbursement?
He files, he files, and it actually, they actually, checks come out monthly, monthly checks will come out to the veterans.
True beach veteran?
Yes.
Okay. So, you know, because the check, the veteran's name is in East Hampton. Okay.
Right, exactly.
Occasionally, he pays directly to landlords.
Okay.
Or directly to...
So, a lot of this is, is housing assistance, food assistance, right?
It can be anything.
Co-pays and...
Yep.
I would think, I thought, I always thought every veteran who needed medical help had the VA. I didn't know...
I think most of them do. And if for any reason, and, and again, if for any reason they don't, that, that first connection he makes is, you know, here's your connection. He has a, of, you know, a person that he deals with right at...
There are widow benefits.
Right at least.
Okay.
Yep.
So, they wouldn't necessarily be eligible for medical under the VA, because they're widows, not veterans.
Mm-hmm.
And there might be somebody that's already getting, uh, disability Veterans benefits, but, you know, it's, uh, is already, is, is disabled, but needs more assistance. And again, it's based on what you're receiving as to what you get. And the money is that John gives out to the veterans is what comes back 75%.
Wow, okay.
Dan, Joe, you have any questions?
No.
All right. This is cut and dry for me. We've gotta help our veterans, and obviously, what really pleases me is the state gives us 75% of the budget back. So, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is already on a public hearing, because you needed it done?
Yes, thank you, very, thank you for that.
The other items under continuing business, the independent transfers and supplemental appropriations have all been dealt with, and we have public hearings scheduled. Do either of the counselors have any further discussion on any of those? Because we discussed them at the last meeting.
I don't think so.
Okay. All right. Then all we have left is stipends. Thank you.
Wait, do you want to talk about it? I'm ready to get one.
Joe, Barbara started off by giving us a listing of different, um, she asked in her clerk's kind of group. So, that's how we got all of these different, uh, figures, and pegged nicely, put them all together. I'm surprised we didn't get Agawam, but maybe. So, to be clear, counselors, if we approve any increase in a stipend, it does not go, it, it does not hit the, the budget for two years. It's, uh, the next term, which is appropriate, because otherwise, people would be raising their salaries and getting them instantly. Yes. Um, the last time we met, I was on the Finance Committee, and we made a plan to increase the mayor's salary last term. Um, and I have another paper she gave me, which, where is it? It shows that the mayor's salary increased in 2006 to $60,000. I think it was 40 at that point. That was in 2000, 2004 was the year it happened. In 2006, it became active. 2008, it went to 65, but it was defeated. So, it went to 70 in 2010, which was a four-year wait, and 75 last year. Um, so, I for one, do not feel the mayor's salary needs adjustment. Anybody on that?
Nope.
Denied.
All right. The council's salary only increased once since we've become a city, if I'm correct on that. And that was in 2008. So, from '96 to 2008, it was $1,500. Like, I'm pretty sure that's right. Um, at that time, too, we increased, the same time we increased the salary of the School Committee, to $900.
Who was that before?
Remember, sorry. A lot, on the other stipends, we usually don't increase them unless we're asked. Board of Assessors, Board of Public Works, and the Board of Registers and Voters all have very small stipends. That's the monthly stipends. So, um, I always thought, gee, why isn't planning or zoning on those? Because those are big-time committees that might need it. But, um, feeling has been, since they haven't asked, and since we're, they're happy to serve, why do it? The reason I'm considering the council's salary is because we're paid for responsibility. And we are low compared to most cities and towns. Amesbury is like us.
Population-wise.
Mm-hmm. And it's also 3,000. I could go either way on this. It's another two years to wait. I mean, 2008 was the last time, I'm sorry, last time it was increased was 2008.
Did you hear from any of the other city councils that we asked?
No, I, I tried twice to get everybody here, especially JP, because he, we basically had to convince him not to deal with the council last time. He was on the council committee.
He asked me yesterday to do this, and I sent him one.
I thought he'd be there.
Yeah, I thought he was coming, too.
Because he agreed to await a term for council. I'm also not, I see that some of these, some of these cities have direct increases for the council president. Some of them even for, um, what do you call, subcommittee chairs? I do not like that. I don't like that at all.
You've never done that. Do you think we'll have any questions for the mayor?
I don't.
We know where to find you.
You said you had another meeting.
Yeah, I do. So, if, if you, it's all right.
Sure.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for...
So, we know, let's say we increased it by 1,000, that's a budget hit of $9,000. If we increase the, let's say we increase the School Committee by 500, that's a budget hit of 3,000. So, now we're at a $12,000 budget hit for the, that's where I'm at. I'm at maybe 1,000 and maybe 500 for the School Committee.
I'm sorry, I know you said it, but I forgot. What was the last date we measured?
2008. Those are the ordinances we would change. 2008 was council. And it was only one time.
Or this was changed in a way, so it didn't affect until 2010?
What does that say there? I have it here someplace.
Just mayor?
Oh, the mayor. This is just mayor. I'm not positive on that deal.
So, the annual Senate Council shall be 3,000 per member, effective January 2, 2008.
It has to be effective. It was 2006 or '07.
The side, the side was improved in that previous term.
So, 2008 is eight years ago.
Yeah.
And this wouldn't happen for two more years.
Right.
Well, a year and a half.
So, that would be 10.
Almost 10 years.
10 years. I think that's, so 10 years is a long time to wait for a raise.
I mean, I know, I know all of us are so budget-conscious, but I think, in my opinion, it becomes, you know, that I think that, um, the amount of work we do is, is, is important to be compensated for. But I think as importantly, I wanna make sure that the salary is something that would attract people who would, you know, who would want to serve and, and...
Well, I don't know about you guys, but when I first ran for office, I didn't even know that there was gonna be a pick. I wanted to serve.
Yeah.
I, I would think that's still the case.
Yeah.
I mean, they get a check now, if it's, well, I get 227 a month, that's nice, but...
I guess, I guess that...
I think we get paid for responsibility.
Yeah.
Really, not how long it takes us to do a job, but responsibility. It's a huge responsibility.
Well, I think it's combination.
Well, okay.
But I, I think, I guess that, that concept I was, I think, is more important for the mayor. I think the mayor's salary always needs to be competitive, so we attract a lot.
Well, because she is a CEO, and that's a full-time job.
So, that, that is probably...
We've already kind of decided that the mayor wouldn't be increased, JP. They were increased, she was increased to 75 last term. So, we're only debating, and probably not gonna do any stipends for this lower-stipend assessors. I mean, you guys feel that we should change those? They're not asking us to, and I, I never feel like we should do that unless we're asked.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of places, I think we debated the Planning Board, the Zoning Board last time. I mean, they have awesome responsibilities, but they like to serve, so the money might pay, I always like a babysitting fee, so that they can go to the, they have to hire a babysitter. For a lot of those committees don't have anything. Worcester, Worcester has a huge population, and the mayor only gets 34,000. Is that because they have a...
Yeah, they have a city manager.
They must have a city manager, too.
Yeah. And Tim Murray, he was the ma, was he the mayor at the time? He was the mayor.
He was the mayor.
Yeah.
And it's kind of a ceremonial job.
Yeah.
I think it, as president, I think as president of the council, you serve as the, as the, as the mayor.
Yeah.
I think, something like that.
Interesting that School Committee manages, like, 70% of the budget, and they get a fraction of the stipends for most of these things.
I don't, you know, I don't remember why that is.
Interesting.
What they get.
I don't, I'm sorry.
They get...
This thing?
You should pull up and see if we can both see it.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, we were talking about managing things.
I can see the difference right here. Well, I'm, I think Agawam is higher than us. They pay more to the council.
That's impossible.
If anybody had me, I, I said 1,000. I just still remember, 1,500 for the School Committee, that's...
And what does that do to the budget? Nine, 12, 13?
$12,000 next, not FY '17, FY '18. Where's it? FY '17. No, no, FY '17 is, FY '18, FY '19. Because FY '18 is next year. It has to, it, half of it has to go into the budget in FY '18, because January 1st is in the middle of a budget year.
Would you have in here some, you have it here somewhere, uh, the health insurance benefits? I know North Hampton offers health insurance benefits.
We only have it against...
Full-time. They get, they get full family plan.
Who gets full guys?
The city councillors.
And they're part-time, too.
Is the state, is the state plan?
They get, they get the same plan that we have, except that they, I think, they, they're, they're, they have 75 or 80%.
Here's North Hampton's info.
Yeah.
They get 9,500, council at large, get 500 more.
So, 9,500, right.
But it doesn't say anything about the health.
They have, they have health insurance. That, that in and of itself is a benefit that's, that's probably worth a family plan, somewhere between 10,000 and 12,000 dollars a year, if I'm not mistaken. I don't have the exact, it's not 5,000 or 6,000 dollars worth of benefit. Having health insurance is a major benefit. According to the charter, our, as far as I remember, the council is not entitled to that benefit in our council. It was removed from charter.
The Charter Committee originally had that.
Originally, yeah. The School Committee did have health insurance, it was, but, uh, that was taken away also from charter. So, I don't know how many of these other communities offer these benefits, but I'm not surprised. That would bring the salary in North Hampton up to 20,000. So, when you look at 20 versus 3, that's a hu, that's a huge difference.
On their side, they have, always have races for council, so...
And they always do, so there's...
They do, because people are probably saying, "Hey, you know, I think I'll serve. Look at this, I get health care."
I get health care, they, they get retirement benefits.
They are de facto employees of the city.
They are, in fact, yeah. So, I mean, that, that creates some level of interest, I think, that keeps the competition keen. It also, I think, offers folks of all social strata to have interest. I mean, if, if you're not doing relatively well, to go to work, I don't know how many hours, if you talked about hours, I'm sorry if I missed that. I think if you, and I put in some, around 15 hours a week on the council. You were meeting, reading about meetings, or studying the state laws, or seeing what we could do, meeting with constituents. It's about $3.84 an hour, if I'm not mistaken. At $10 hours a week, it's, it's about 5.60 and change, 5.67, I think.
I, I, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as, I wanna serve, and I, as I said, before you came here, I was elected, I didn't even know we had a salary.
But, so, what I'm, what I'm saying, though, is that for someone who isn't, doesn't have another, a good, decent job that can support themselves with, they're not gonna look to this. And you wanna have, as a place to work and serve, I mean, I think you wanna have people from all social strata consider running for the, for the council. If you don't offer a living wage, I don't think you're gonna...
I don't think this is meant to be a living wage. I think this is meant to be...
It's a living wage in Boston.
I don't mean a living wage, but, but, look at it. Ed, can I have the half or a third of the minimum wage?
No.
It's not...
The ordinance...
No, I hear.
I said that, so I, I stand behind that. I think you wanna have people who will keep the interest of the city and be sharp to be able to keep East Hampton moving forward. So, and this is two years.
I don't think, I don't think this salary is gonna attract them to that.
This salary is not gonna attract them.
Well, what you're asking for, to me, would be a major increase, say, 10 grand per, that's, oh my God, I'm gonna run, like it is in North Hampton.
It's like a hundred thousand.
Right. And I don't agree with that, because we're a small community. I, I don't think we're gonna attract better people or more people to the City Council because of the salary. I really don't think we are. Uh, the fact that there's a stipend is secondary to most everybody who's running, I think. It's my opinion. Um, but, we should make an adjustment. I just don't wanna make a major adjustment. I mean, I don't think that looks good. So...
It would have to be a huge adjustment to get someone to run just one year.
Yeah.
I think we need, we need to look at it as, you don't want it to be a disincentive I think we need to look at it as, you don't want it to be a disincentive for someone. I could go to work, earn ten dollars an hour, or I could go work as a councilor. I'd be eighty-eighty.
I got to tell you, I don't look at this as any sort of income generator. Like, this is not my retirement plan. This is a thing that I'm very interested in doing, much like you are, Dan, in that I want to be involved in the local government, whether or not I'm paid zero, three thousand, or forty-five hundred. It's not material to me. And anyone out there who would view this as a quote-unquote "job," we're not employees of the city. We're not, we're not employees of the city. So that's the difference. They want to be an employee, they can, you know.
I think raising it every ten years is appropriate. I really don't, I mean, it took more than ten years. It was nineteen ninety-six that the city was adopted, and it was two thousand eight when they got a increase. I have no problem with that, but I, I don't think I'd vote for anything more than a thousand, maybe fifteen hundred. But again, it's not for two years, so the mayor, whoever the mayor is at that time, can make a budget adjustment. And I do think we need to raise the School Committee's salary. They're dealing with, as Peg said, tremendous responsibility.
That's what I was going to say. If anything goes up, if the City Council does that, the School Committee should...
Oh, yeah, and I think they did the last, same time. What are we doing?
So you're suggesting a thousand and five hundred?
That's my first question.
And what was it, ten years ago?
Ten years ago, it was fifteen hundred. So we increased, we doubled it.
I would be interested in evaluating what that lift would be, whether it be three, what did we say, twelve, thirteen? Curious to know what that would, percentage of the budget, the overall budget. Now, I know that's a small number, but, you know, I wouldn't want us to be out of proportion. You know, I'm sure the budget, I don't know, I guess it happens.
You need to look at it. The way I look at it is, it's ten years, that's a hundred dollars per year we're increasing the budget. I mean, that's minimal news. Unfortunately, because we wait ten years, it hits the budget heavy the first year, but it's a stable thing. I don't know what to say, because it's so many years in advance, that you don't know where we're going to be.
Right.
The mayor's budget statement, I was so thrilled, school got everything they asked for, we are getting more people back. It's a totally positive budget this year, which makes me feel comfortable asking for something two years from. Her message that came in the packet, I called, I said, "You're kidding." She was able to give the School Committee the money that they asked for, because they went through and did it by need. There was no cuts, there's no cuts this year. And police fire, DPW are getting a man back. A person back. So the budget is a positive message. If, if I read in that message, "This will result in layoffs of ten people here, more teachers get," I'd be reluctant.
And I think that's why we've cut the salary so, I mean...
We didn't do it last time, because we were cutting teachers all right and left.
Yeah, we're very, very difficult times.
And the mayor, we increased because we do need that CEO to be attractive to people to run. Although, anybody can run. I mean, you don't have to have, but if somebody's like, a businessman who wants to retire from a business and knows how to run a company and wants to do the mayor, then they have a good resume, okay. And seventy-five thousand isn't a bad salary. You know, ours is still lower than most at seventy-five thousand. So because of the budget message, I'm okay with increasing the salary, that's okay. What did you want, JP?
What was Barbara's, not Barbara, the county clerk to the council's salary?
We asked court to increase this year.
To what, what was the level?
Because last year, I think we didn't, right?
The mayor asked us not. But I think we increased it this time fifty bucks. I don't remember, but I don't remember, but...
So it was more, if I recall, it was more than the council's salary?
No, it's not.
No, it's not.
Not even close.
Oh, no. No.
She gets a hundred dollars a meeting.
Yeah, I mean, she gets, uh... Twenty-five hundred.
A year.
So she may be, is that, what budget is that?
That's the...
Sixteen?
Sixteen, fifteen, so it, so we gave her the raise, she's probably a three. She's probably a three, or a little, a little more. So that's the range.
I, I think that apples are hard to pick, to me. She does a lot.
She does a lot.
That requires a certain skill, though.
So what we increased...
You could be a counselor. You don't have to have any skills.
No, you don't.
We increased...
Skills in convincing people to vote for you.
Those are the people we're looking.
We increased, we increased from a hundred dollars a month to a hundred and twenty dollars a month. We increased from sixty-five dollars a meeting to seventy-five dollars a meeting. It amounts to twenty-seven, eight.
Again, because the budget message was good, I'm okay. I wouldn't want to do this any year, which are a lot.
But the budget, the increase we were talking about with Gay Bar, that is, that's in twenty-seventeen.
That's next, that'll have to be in this budget. If she approves it...
Sixteen, so that's even more than what you...
Yeah, but I think...
But we don't know if the mayor approved it or not. We will know when we read the budget. But hers is next year. This is two years.
Oh, yeah.
Because we can't vote ourselves an increase, we have to run for election.
Exactly.
Might keep some of our better counselors in charge here. Would it keep you? Four thousand dollars? JP, you don't do this job because of the money. I know you don't.
I don't, and in fact, I don't think I cashed my first ten checks initially, because I love, I love what I'm, I love what I'm doing. It's a great job. It's exciting. You get to help folks in your community and make good decisions. All of those are good reasons, but I think, I think we have to be up with the times. I think we're not back in nineteen ninety.
But you're asking also for a change to the role of the city council, I mean, in terms of being a city employee.
No, no.
To get benefits.
You just questioned it.
He was just suggesting...
I was suggesting that in other communities, they get benefits.
Okay.
I'm not suggesting...
That we do that.
That we do that, no. I wasn't suggesting that we give health ins, there's, we can't give health insurance, but we can pay a compensation in relative conformance with what the market... Hey, East Hampton, I think it was a forward-looking community.
Well, right now, Amesbury pays the same. They pay the, we, I don't know if you were here, but we are, I am deadly opposed to council president, by chairs of committees getting more money. I'm opposed to that, I'm wholly opposed to that. So in Amesbury, the council president is four thousand, but I don't know what the charters of Amesbury gives that person to do. If the council president is second in line to the mayor.
Do they get health insurance? We have a question to ask, because that would make it about thirteen to fifteen thousand. I don't know.
But it's the only city that has...
The only one that's equal.
It's the only one that's equal to us, and they're at three thousand, so I don't know what to say. Shall we do a thousand for the council?
I'm covered with that.
Let's make a motion, and I'll make a motion that the City Council approve an increase for the next term of one thousand dollars for the City Council to four thousand, and five hundred dollars for the School Committee making their total fourteen hundred. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
If you think it's too low, you can always try to convince the...
I didn't say it was too low. I just was saying that I think at the existing rate,
Well, I'm going to ask her to give me Agawam's money, too. I mean, I'm going to, I'm going to bring this forward, I guess, at the meeting. No, I'll wait two weeks to bring this forward, because, Joe, you're not going to be there. I'd like to do this when there's a lot of people. We have until December thirty-first to bring this forward, so there's no rush. But in the meantime, maybe we'll get Agawam. And I'll keep this on the agenda as continuing business, so we can change it the next meeting. If Agawam says, "Oh, we're the same population, and they get five thousand," I'd like to hear, I'd like, you know, just, but on the other hand, I don't want to go wild here. Twelve thousand dollars is a big hit. It's a hit to the budget. It's a lot of money. Okay, you okay, Joe? I don't think we have anything else. Our next meeting is May eleventh. That's a regular meeting. We have stuff on the agenda that will require our attention, okay? That's, that's the other ones.
That's the other one.
Right, May eleventh. And I'm going to keep those just to the budget, unless there's an emergency appropriation.
Okay.
Because we have to get through those. So May eleventh is a finance meeting, and then seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, twenty-four, and twenty-five are budget meetings.
Aye.
Move for adjourn?
Move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I just texted a friend who ran for City Council, Agawam, she knows how much it is.
Oh, yeah? What did she...